Okay. I've got 4:30 and I hope everybody's doing well. For those who do not have a copy, we have extra copies of our agenda up on the table up front as well as the financial presentation that Ms. Vicki will be conducting for us in a little bit. Today is, of course, Monday, July 31st, right at 4:31. Today is a combined work session and call meeting. So we'll actually be discussing some items as well as I'll be entertaining possible motions to discuss on each of these business matters as we go through those. So if you would, hereby call this meeting to order. And if you wouldn't, please rise with your sign of pleasurable allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I'd like to ask for invitation Pastor Mark Turner with Cleveland Worship Center, White County Ministerial Alliance. Mark?
Blessed be. Gracious, kind, heaven and father, we thank you for your many blessings and Lord, as the opportunity to come and to be a part of such a great county and a great administration. Lord, we just ask that your favor continue to shine upon us as a county and as people. Lord, we just ask, God, forgive us of our faults, but God also lets me move, be moved quick when we're going to offer forgiveness, where forgiveness is given by your grace. We thank you, Lord, for this day. Jesus, amen.
Amen. Thanks, Mark. Okay, moving on to our agenda. Item four, Consider adoption of minutes to the June 26, 2017 work session and the regular meeting in July, excuse me, and regular meeting and the July 18th call meeting, including the executive session minutes. Ms. Shanda, before I ask for a motion, on digital recordings, how long do you want to keep those, Miss Cures, till you record back over them?
I keep them.
You keep them? Because I know I was going to-
As long as what I have will read them, we can listen to them.
Gotcha.
I'm sure they enjoy some of those recordings, won't be able to be read.
In a lot of our meetings, I know you try to summarize what's being said and motions and what have you, so it just hit me, I was curious about how long this lasted. Okay, having said that, gentlemen, now if you've had an opportunity to review those minutes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Commissioner O'Brien first, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Nick first, I believe. Any discussion with the board? Or have done on favor of the approval of the minutes as presented, signify by saying aye? I both say no, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item five, Mr. Kevin Hamby, our Spots Manager, presenting our monthly Spots Spanish report. Kevin, you got the deal.
Well, real good news, folks are spending money up here, there's no question about that. Looks like our estimated revenue actual projected has climbed a bit this month. The check was three seven four versus the projection of three hundred, so forty-five percent through the program, we're projected to be a fair amount ahead of what we estimated in the referendum, so that's good news. Folks are spending money up here without question.
What about larger months we've ever, we've seen?
I think it's probably the largest month since I've been working up here. What do you say, Luke?
I think there's, there was one larger.
Last year.
That year ago.
Of July, August.
There was one about-
Just a few thousand dollars more.
Well, Kim Blake and I went to them in Helen.
You should have listened twice.
Trust me, I paid him out a lot louder than I went up to. So that's pretty, that's an amazing thing to see, whether you do it or not. It's just, it's just bad. We're doing real well on cash flow. You can see the encumbrances today. This also includes the shares cards that were approved at the last meeting. So if you noticed, our available by year end has gone up by about twenty, a little over $20,000, and that's due to having the big check this month, even encumbering the year's lease, this year's lease payments on patrol cars. So we're still a little over a million dollars expected by the end of the month, and actually we stay at $300,000 for the rest of the year. So we keep that in mind, it's like we've had this past month, that number will obviously grow, so it's something good. The only thing I would caution about these numbers, while they, while they look good, we've still got a little bit of a cash flow, you know, concern, we've got to catch up. That money ought to be available at the end of the year. We've got to catch up on cash flow perspective. So we want to be real cognizant of the fact that, you know, the money's coming in, it's not here yet, but it's coming in. So again, from a cash flow perspective, we want to be real cognizant of that. Otherwise, everything looks pretty good, we can just, just watch our cash flow and keep too.
Keep too. Well, thereby, I thought I might make a comment, it wouldn't be appropriate at this time. Hold on, was that over? All right, we'll have more fun here. All right, any questions, Kevin? All right, none. Kevin, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item six, Consider a request for funding from the Friends Apartment Farm for the 2017 Fall Celebration. Mr. Mark Johnson, you have the deal.
Thank you, sir. Hardman Farm, of course, when it opened, this is the event that was formerly held at Smith-Gallwood State Park, and they thought it would be good to move it to Hardman Farm when the farm got opened because the location is just so much better and there's more room to have a big event, a big fall event. This is an event that's keys in on families, children to come, and we just haven't, of course, since we didn't have an official Friends group until the farm was open, and we just, we're, we're trying to build up our funds and we're trying to push things that need to be pushed, but this just, we feel this event could be so much more than it has been for the past couple of years, and we just felt like if we could get some advertising out there, and I apologize to the things, the broad view that should have in your package there. That's an application for the vendors because we didn't have the flyers officially printed up yet. I don't think we do at this point, but this, it'll be that same logo and will look similar to that, that we hope to get distributed. And we would just like to see it grow, we feel like we could have a much better event and a lot more crowds to it if we can just push it a little more, if we can just take this year and really put a big push on and get the equipment that we need to do it. And so that's why we're requesting these funds.
And I'm gonna go ahead and broach the subject, and Mark, please, these comments, do not take them as a reflection upon the request, he's sure of it. Gentlemen, as you know, on our agenda, and I'm kind of jumping ahead here, we've got a few items on our agenda for funding, and while, and I say this because it's very challenging to make a derogatory comment when these are all phenomenal events, I've actually personally attended them, they're great, but we know where we are financially. We've got to cross our Ts and dot our Is. At what point are we going to go to the well and fund not only this but other activities? This is a decision of the board as a whole. And Mark, again, this is not a reflection upon this project, and please, I don't want anything misconstrued of what I'm saying, please don't. Because you've seen me there, you know I'm there.
I know, you do.
But we have a, at this point, we've got fiduciary responsibility on how are we gonna spend our funds? And then these funds, my understanding, would come out of our general fund that came from the Hotel Motel, but it's funds that would go into the general fund from Hotel Motel that the board is already using to balance the budget, and we're using those funds elsewhere. So we'd be borrowing from Peter to move over to Paul. I didn't say borrow from Peter to pay Paul, I said to give to Paul. So, anyway. Guys, it's a good event, I know that, we've got multiple good events coming up, I just, what is the direction is from the board? Where do we want to go and how do we want to approach these items going forward?
If I could make one more comment, if that would be okay?
Yes.
The amount that was put on there is what the board, our Friends Board asked me to put in the request I asked for, but to quote a former pastor of mine, all donations are cheerfully accepted.
Well, and the request is for five grand. Correct.
Yes.
Mark, what's the intent to use the five grand for mostly advertising?
Advertising and to get things, a lot of times when we hold these events, we're having to actually rent equipment like tents and that sort of thing. So the people, our goal is to see it, allow people to be able to see it from the road from seventeen and from seventy-five, and we were hopeful to be able to maybe purchase some things and get banners that could be used year to year. Traditionally, it's always the second Saturday in October, so rather than having a date put on it, we would get something that could be used from year to year and just have that put on there the second Saturday in October.
Question, if your mind's, that it's not the Hotel Motel's, it's not brick and mortar rent tax, is it not? I'm thinking, because I know when, up there at Sawtage, when they do their February deal, you know, twenty-five thousand, it's strictly rent tax, and it's just coming up, so it's going to-
The purpose of Hotel Motel?
Yeah.
Mike, Shanda?
Well, we have two accounts. We have regular Hotel Motel, and then we have an account for brick and mortar, the tourism product development. Tourism product development funds can only be used for brick and mortar projects, so other Hotel Motel tax money can be used for promoting tourism.
Well, we took out the part, and it goes back, that's a permanent structure set in there, so this is gonna be-
Yeah, I know. That's tourism product development money, that's brick and mortar. And all the, all in our budget, we have funded the chamber, we have funded the CBB, we have funded the Sawtage McCouchie Center, out of our regular Hotel Motel funds, and then the remainder of the money, which was about $140,000, was, was budgeted into the general fund to help the general fund, out of our regular Hotel Motel tax money, not tourism product development, regular hotel fund.
I can.
So that money, that money in effect is already spent because it's in our budget, and it's already programmed for other, other developments?
And that's sort of one pool of money you can use for, it goes to general fund and we can allocate it as needed, correct, out of the budget?
That's correct.
The other funds are specific to product tourism development.
Yeah, that's, and that's only, that's only capital improvement for brick and mortar projects.
Mark, I'm sorry you had to be the first one to, and not that your project's not great, and that's not, read the newspapers, listen to the radio, you can see where we are, it's a financial sacrifice, so.
If that money is out, you order this or any other event, it will have to come out of general fund.
All right. Mark, I know you're pushing on time, and this is coming up pretty soon. Anyway, I don't know what to say to your numbers, I mean, I'll probably have some for Ken. Is this something we can stall for thirty more days? I know that's my favorite saying, I mean, you know, government's thirty more days, but we're studying, but something we can look at, because we don't have our end numbers yet for the year, just to see where, we've already got this year's budget, like you said, you know, set up and allocated, which are, you know, I have one in hand, so, you know, no question, but-
I think, well, if that should have, it's October the fourteenth this year's date, so as long as we had time to push some advertising on radio, newspapers, and getting some things printed up, like that would, we could get it out there.
Banning the borders.
Yeah. I understand with our year numbers, the Hotel Motel tax may get lined up where we can hit a little bit, you know, if we decide to do it, I'm not saying we will, but, I'm saying, I know we, of course, again, I know this is something that, you know, has come up, but we try to get everybody to come in, if not this year, at next year's budget time, you know, if we did, you know, come in and, you know, request it, so we can kind of plan for it, and kind of dig something up, so I'm not saying we can get it, but I don't mind looking at it, keep waiting till I can get some final number.
With this one, it took us years, we've been there since I've been there.
And, you know, I want to talk about all of this.
Well, and I say this respectfully, I think, I heard, I know I've said it, and I know I'm not the only one who's said it, over the years, we've been very diligent with our funds, and it seems like we want to dial up other elected agencies, say, go see the board commissioners. We've got to, we've got to draw the line a little bit.
I think, I think that, you know, it would be good if we could see, see your budget on what, you know, how this was being spent and everything, have a review of budget just to show us what we're funding and how much of the work we're funding.
All right. I guess what we're hearing, and I'm putting you on the spot, you got any thoughts?
No, I agree.
Let's table it. Am I hearing that?
Let's table it.
Let's table it for thirty days, and Mark, we'll be scheduling our work session, I hope, here in a little while, at the end of the meeting, but if you have to leave, of course, email Shanda, call Mike, call whatever, we'll get you the dates when it comes, because we're not trying to leave you high and dry. That is not where this is going, it's just-
Well, I wish I could have been sooner, but the board just directed me at the last meeting. This part of the game, I'm not so sure I'm laid whole of it.
Yep. Thank you, Mark, appreciate it. All right. Moving on to item seven, Consider requests for funding for the White County Chamber of Commerce, the 2017 Spirit of Appalachia Food, Wine and Arts Festival. Ms. Cindy, you have the deal.
With the other hand out, so, but yes, this is the second year of the Spirit of Appalachia. We had a tremendous, successful year last year. I truly believe that this event is slated to be a signature event for White County. This is the only Georgia grown event in North Georgia, so we're really excited that sponsorship partnership doesn't put money on the table, but it brings a lot of credibility and support and, and marketing, and they have really supported our event by bringing the chef up, the demonstrations. We've expanded the event this year to, to basically need a much larger tent, which is great. We know that last year we had 1,600 people, we, we basically tagged everyone who came in, it was a free event to come in, but $10 to park, and, and basically, people were given either a red or a green tag, and we were able to count the number of tags. So we know that there were just a little over 1,600 people, and it drew a very large crowd. We're looking at expanding that, Carol Jackson is helping us hopefully with a chef from North Georgia Technical College, obviously they're, they're partnering with, with our education system, and we're hoping that their culinary arts program will partner with us to do a Friday night farm-to-table event. So that will be something new to add, that will require some additional marketing and advertising. We would like to do some radio advertising in the Atlanta metro market. Last year, part of a cooperative advertising package, we were able to incorporate the Spirit of Appalachia with that program, unfortunately, the timing is not going to work out this year for that, that cooperative with radio and the Atlanta market. Atlanta Magazine is back as a sponsor, and basically what that means is that they're providing advertisement in their digital magazine as well as their printed magazine. So I, I understand the situation and what you guys are, are up against, and I appreciate, again, anything that, that might be available. Our event is up until the sixteenth, and to give you a little overview, this is a sample of the, the ads that are running, and I went ahead and took full liberty of putting the county's logo on all of ours because we had to pull the trigger. I wanted to wait until the budget was done before broaching the, the commission about partnership and sponsorship. We have Chef Hollis Shuke, who is a chef, Georgia grown chef, and the chef for six city governors is organizing our chef demonstrations. We also have a chef from Big Green Egg coming this year, so we're hoping that that's going to open some doors for us, too. We're really excited about this year's event, we've got a, a great lineup for entertainment. We've got a local guy that has a record deal, Steve Bryson, that will be playing, and, what is the other guy's name? Another artist that will be performing is Tommy Townsend, and he, he has played with the Waylon Jennings Band, so he'll be coming up for our part of entertainment, too. It's gonna be a great, great event, and we're just hoping that we're gonna have the same great weather.
And Cindy, as I said to Mark a little while ago, I don't want my comments, please, to be misconstrued, that these aren't great events, it's just these are financial discussions we need to start having as a board, and where are we going? I, I know you understand that, so, because the turnout was phenomenal last year.
It is, and we'll be adding another police officer because of traffic control and the additional parking fortunately available at Hardman Farm.
I mean, here, if we did barbecue, we'd all cut it off.
Four or five?
Four.
Something like that. But when we started, we started slimming it down, we trimmed it down to, I think, 2,500 than last year, it was the existence. Does that sound about right?
That was gonna be a signature event, too.
I guess that's still going on.
The hillbilly hog?
No, not there.
Nope. No.
Yeah. What's the total budget for your event here?
Uh, here, without having the budget in front of me, because we've got so many of the fleecy parts that we're having to add, I've got to add in some additional place and some tent. We bought some tents last year, but the forty-by-forty tent, I know it was gonna be another thousand dollars, so I, and I've got to do a count on our glasses, we may have to buy some additional glasses. We bought 2,500 last year, but we may have to buy some more, so, yeah, I'm still working on finalizing.
Did you run out of glasses last year?
No, we did not have glasses.
What were the end numbers last year, sir?
The end numbers, I-
Like last year's budget, when the fact was around, well, the projected expense was $22,000, what, I guess what actually ended up happening once this budget on this-
And I would, I would prefer to bring that to you, to where we have our numbers.
$10 per car, did that go back into the $22,000, or did that go back into the chamber? How do you use the first that? I mean, because, you're telling me this guy's giving you advertising, we're probably getting on the car, so, you know, pretty soon we're spending more of the mortgage cost.
Well, yeah, and, and to be perfectly honest, we do have to, to raise money for the operation of the chamber, so, you know, we, we do have to do fundraisers, and this is a fundraiser for the chamber, but we also have to do, you know, some, some additional advertising and marketing and so forth. But, but rather than, you know, charging everyone who comes in, we felt like, you know, we would open it up more for families and, and groups, and they did come, and, and actually had had broad reach, thanks to the newspaper, you saw, we had people from North Carolina, families sitting out in the tree, there was a great picture of them, and then we, you know, the, the goal is to put heads in beds, and one of the things that were really, was really, really exciting to me to see is we want this to be a, an event that's going to have residual, so that it's not just come from one time and come to a festival, but to come back and experience White County. So by exposing them to our food producers, our wineries, and our arts, that I, I believe that that's happening, and, and one of the great things that I saw when we had that tourism product development team, resource team here, we went around and we stopped at Sheila's Village Market. Sheila is expanding her Georgia grown section, and when I walked in, we were talking about it, I saw this bootlicker hot sauce and some, some lemon cheese that, that was at the, the festival. I said, oh my gosh, Sheila, these people were at the, the Spirit of Appalachia. She said, I know, I had people coming in and asking for it. So now I'm carrying those products, and I also noticed that Elizabeth Goode is also carrying a couple of those products to, in, in her store. So our goal is to expose people to products that's, that's being made in our area, even though it's open up to all of Georgia, because it is a Georgia grown event, but I, I believe that people will come back, they'll, they'll have an experience, and they'll want to go back into those, those various places that sell those products, like Unicor Deserts, you know, they'll recognize, be exposed to that, and that these are the places where you can buy it. So that's what we're encouraging those food producers to do, that not only come up on time to buy this product, but come back and tell this is where you can buy them on your next visit.
The attendance was great last year, I mean, when I was there, it was, it was kind of-
And I believe that we have the, the potential to, to have a lot more, unlike the, the Unicor Wine Festival, where people had to pay, I believe it was 35 or 30 dollars to get in, you know, once you pay a ticket price to get in, you feel like you have to stay. But what was happening, people would come in, pay $10 to park, they would go and visit, and then we knew that they went to some of these other places because they said, yeah, we had somebody come in from the festival, bought a case. So, you know, I feel like it was, you know, doing what it needs to do, people didn't feel like they had to come and stay all day, so that kind of kept our parking lot revolving, too, so.
How much, how much in your chamber operating budget, on your revenue side right there, how much do you project that the revenues will come in from this event to help you in operation of the chamber?
We're hoping, you know, for about $8,000 would be the static, if we could, if we can make that happen, but again, depending on, you know, things that we have to do, if we have to pay a caterer to make the farm-to-table, you know, depending on how that comes out, but I think that, that builds the program and, and it gives, you know, another reason to come and stay, stay a night, that, you know, there'll be some additional expenses. So if we can't get a North Georgia Technical College chef, we may, I may look at, you know, having a, having to pay a chef to come and do it, and then we'll have to, to sell tickets.
And that's the Friday night, that's right.
That would be up Friday night. But, you know, we've got the tables and the chairs and everything will be set up, and it'd be nice to be able to, you know, to hire a band to, to play, and I think that, you know, it's like an ideal, idyllic setting, perfect, you know, out there at the farm.
How do you feel, Jim?
I'd say we need to table it with the other one, do we find out?
Okay.
Who's the table?
I'm gonna motion table.
You want?
Table, what do you want for her?
Yeah, and I would like to see, yeah, I'd like to see the budget and all the expenses for that, what's your budget?
Okay, so I have-
I'd need to see those, when we're only putting money out, so we can see how some of these-
I have a motion to table until the chamber's able to provide a budget of expenses and proposed revenue, second by Commissioner Hawke, did I say that correctly, Commissioner Goodger? Did I hear close enough? All right.
Shim, shim.
If you would, Cindy, as soon as you can get that to Ms. Shanda or Mike, and you guys get that to us as quickly as you can, and I do want to be respectful to both you and to the Friends Apartment Farm, we understand time is of the essence, but it's, we're not hickering on this side.
I understand.
You, you need to answer, but yet, I understand the concerns that was just stated as well. So, having said that, in a discussion, I'm gonna favor the table, see if I can say a aye. Aye, motion table. Ms. Cindy, she'll get that to us as quickly as you can.
I know, I appreciate your consideration, and I'm leaving first thing, I want to just call the board and go to a conference, and we'll be back until Friday evening, but I give it to you.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Guys, I'm gonna beer off for just a second, these, these subjects, would it, so we can give our staff some help as well as help- Guys, I'm gonna be here for just a second. These, these subjects, would it, so we can give our staff some help, as well as help organizations like the Chamber and Friends and what have you, we need to look at probably some type of criteria to set a standard policy so that...
I think we need to get it out that we're gonna give money, we need to look at everybody and see what, how much of it we're funding, what percentage.
There's a part in our county code that addresses providing funding to nonprofit civic organizations, and that's the process that we follow each year with those annual contracts when we do the budget. That might be worth looking at, you know, in the future, that an organization's gonna request something, that it has to be done within our budgeting process when y'all are making those budget decisions.
Can you send a copy of that out to the board, please?
Yeah, because we...
We've got, we've worked in workshops with all of our different organizations. I don't want this to be uncomfortable, so if we can't get business done, but yet the Chambers and what have you come into these forums and no one takes vacation, Mike and Shandor ain't gonna sit down with them and say A, B, C, D, especially when we're getting to the midnight hour. It's not fair. So let's, let's get that to us, please. All right. Moving on, item eight, consider request of parts and wreck, forgive mower and equipment. Who has the hill on that? Ken? Item eight in our package.
Ain't looking real good, is it, Ken?
At least I am in front of David.
You're calling out four shoulders.
Goats.
Ken, get started, we're gonna...
Thank you, gentlemen. Joe asked me to be here tonight. He was gonna present this because he had requested it from y'all during the budget process, how to splotch funding. And tonight turned out to be equipment night over at the complex, so he had to, he had to be there for that, so he is, he is over there tonight. These quotes that you see in front of you are quotes that they got back during all the budget process, they are still good. I called and confirmed, these quotes are good, like they stand right now. He said he didn't care which brand we went with, as long as everything was specked out the same as far as operations, you know, the engine size, the cutting width, the vacuum systems. This is for, these quotes are for a sixty-one inch cut zero terminal with a clamshell grass vacuum system on it with a dump from the seat feature. And I looked over these, you guys probably know by now, it's been for you a time or two for zero turns. I'm a scag man. I think the scag, the scags are the, are the better for the system that they want. This mower would be exclusively used for fields, to cut fields and vacuum up the thacks off of the, off of the side. That's what we want to use it for.
When was the last mower bought at the park today?
Last year.
Was it that? I do not recall. I have not a clue.
I know my memory is short, but sometimes I have flashbacks, and sometimes I'm right by that.
It's been, it's been for years.
All that I have seen, guys, up there is a Gravely sixty-inch cut, I think it is, and an old, old John Deere.
What's that, what we bought for you guys to make?
For us in maintenance was two, two years ago, I think it was.
That was right.
Yeah, I think it's two.
Last mower we bought was for maintenance. We didn't, we hadn't bought any for maintenance.
Of course.
Could I get a call?
We're just taking a motor handle, isn't it? Yeah, I guess so. We knew we'd got these. Before you get more bills, I found out.
The base of circle. And the scag price is the cheaper, the cheaper one, twelve. I can't see that, I got my last twelve, twelve, two ninety-four.
So how old is, how old is one of the replacements?
Uh, we're actually not replacing, we're gonna be just adding this one, just four fields, and we're gonna keep the two old ones for, for the commoners.
They're still?
Yeah, they're still operational. But they're just, they're really not set up for the fields and the vacuum system for getting the thacks off the fields.
All right.
Did Jean give your government discount on this?
He did, yes, sir.
Okay, so that's, Swineheart's low bid at twelve thousand, two ninety-four even, right?
Mm-hmm.
Which is the mower you prefer?
It is the mower I prefer. We got, you notice there is a, there's one in there, I think there was three quotes from three different dealers on scag, and there was one...
Ferris?
Ferris, that was requested for me to get a quote from one of the employees. They, one of the employees preferred Ferris. I've had some bad experiences with those.
I'm gonna state this, and you and I had a conversation several months ago, that Howard Brothers has a presence in White County as far as residential living.
Right.
And they've requested a high-end bid on, and they carry X mark.
Okay.
So I just, we're not, I'm not, we're not gonna pick this apart on this one.
Right.
And I don't, I'll be blunt, I don't want table it for the sake of table, just for that.
And I think, I think...
It's either yes or no on this, in my opinion.
Right, and I think John also carries scag, too.
I think he does, too.
I think he does.
I'm almost sure he does.
I think he does.
Well, I thought he wasn't, I'm just serious, we, we had this conversation.
Right, and gentlemen, I didn't get these meetings, just, just to be honest.
And we understand that, for the record, uh...
I'm trying to get him to...
Yeah, and for the record, Ken Payne is over our maintenance department, and over the last couple of months or few months, we've actually incorporated the maintenance program at the wreck department falls underneath Ken, so we're going through a little bit of a transition period right now, so just, just have...
So this, this more than a budget item, it would have to come out of splotch.
Correct.
That's the way it was presented, that we have to...
Yeah, we deferred all capital items to splotch.
Just a clarification, you said this is only gonna be used like soak up the grass, I mean, is this something you can pull the bag, the catcher off, and use this on one of the other fields where you're not having a catcher, so we have a multipurpose unit instead of a fourteen-thousand-dollar piece set and stick?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. They can't, the vacuum system can't come off.
You can use it on other...
On other fields, right, yeah.
Basically, what it's all pretty much...
It's gonna be for all fields, yeah.
But mainly, though...
But mainly, you used to...
I'm fine with...
Is for field use, yeah.
You are making a motion?
I just think that, I think that was money for...
I have a, I have a motion, Commissioner Nix, Commissioners Hawke and Second to purchase the scag from Swineheart's, the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars even, as in Swineheart's was the low bid, which was a government contract, be it correct?
Yes.
Got it, first and the second, we're in discussion.
Take the other way, splotch, then?
O eight, don't touch that.
Yeah.
Take the other, oh, okay, O eight splotch, and agree, agree. All right. Close discussion, all in favor of a person that's purchasing the O eight splotch, a new lawnmower for the wreck department, see if I can say a "aye," or if I say no, motion here's. And stuff that's over past the O eight splotch, guys. All right. Item nine, consider repair replacement options for animal control vehicles. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, gentlemen. We have a animal control vehicle that is currently out of service. We had it parked, it was one of the units we used quite a bit. It's two thousand and four Ford van that we purchased new by the county and currently has one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-seven miles. The engine has got sick and's gonna need to be replaced. Ford Motors says they give us an estimate of six thousand dollars to replace the motor in the vehicle. The, we have a...
Is it diesel?
No, it's gas. The, it's also got some front-end issues that we have not got quoted yet. We don't even know exactly what's going on in the front.
Model's gone.
Hundred and sixty-nine thousand. This was one of those conversion vans, and in two thousand and fifteen, there was a request made to replace that with another animal transport conversion van, and those cost about forty-seven thousand dollars, and that was the first two splotch. I don't see a need in doing that. If we do decide, or you guys do decide to replace this unit, I would just purchase a basic Ford, Ford F-150 oil-drive truck and put some equipment in the back of it, which is running right now about twenty-one and twenty-two thousand on government contract.
That's just the regular car, long wheelbase truck.
Sure, wheelbase, yes. And so I just need some direction, whether to pursue repairs, which personally I don't think that's a good investment, or to purchase a new pickup.
How many vehicles do we have in operation that animal control?
Uh, we have three other vehicles. One of them is a two thousand and two Ford F-150 with a hundred and twelve thousand mile loan that's actually, that wore out. And then in two thousand, we got a two thousand and eleven F-250 that has a transport body on the back of it. It's got thirty-five thousand, and then we got a two thousand and thirteen F-250 with forty-seven thousand miles. It's a pickup that we converted over. So for that, for that department to operate, we need three, three vehicles operating all the time.
These, I'm just brainstorming here, do we still have the, behind the building here, those ambulances? Three of them?
Two.
We got two back there.
Are they shot?
Uh, one of them is gonna, is pretty good, we're gonna try to convert it to a support unit for the fire department, the other one's probably gonna have to be sold. They got over two hundred-some thousand miles on them.
Are we rough on these things?
Pretty much.
Probably will.
And you need a, we have found that, and this two thousand and four van, this other F-150, that's, neither one of those are oil-driven, we, we need oil-driven in those, in those operations.
I'm a little concerned that we're, that we're losing these vehicles with this kind of model.
I can tell you prior to my administration over there, there was no regular service on these vehicles. That's something we had to implement about a year or so ago.
You thought it changed that last one time?
Yeah, well, I mean, we're getting good mileage out of, out of patrol cars, and these trucks ought to be getting better service out of them than any other car.
That would not respond to the, you know, the near and all-out speeding charges. I hope not, so, sorry, don't forget the newspaper. We're running down the...
You can't mic this, though.
No, you can't. All right. I'll need some levity in here. All right.
So I mean, I mean, animal control officers do we have, and I know we're, I know we're one shy down there, are we close to having somebody in that position? Are we looking pretty hard at somebody and close to hiring?
We have, with the promotion of Officer Castner, the chief officer, that opened up a officer's position, and we started advertisement on that this week. I expect it'll take us probably about a month to locate someone.
So you're saying that three vehicles stay on the road all the time here?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Twenty-two thousand, you're still running out there, maybe twenty, it may be twenty-three.
Yeah, it's got the...
Bit out through the state contract, see what the basic plan is.
Just so you guys will know, June the eighth, June the eighth state contract price from Jackie Jones was twenty thousand seven eighty. And I'm trying to get that number.
We got the round number.
Yes, and I rounded that up because I didn't know if that has changed, because that, that's price, that state concession price change, and it's, in June it was ten thousand dollars, this month it may be eight thousand dollars or so.
I think I'm hearing a consensus, everybody's concerned about spending six grand and putting into it. It's what I'm, it's a feeling I'm getting, and I'm wrong, say so. Y'all wanna have a day, we go out and bid it out efficiently and bring it back to us in the next work session, and we'll review it, and I think we need commitments.
Oh, we're questioning the motor, engine?
New, new engine, it's been a clown all...
Oh, great, you're going back in engine business again, huh? We're talking about just bidding out of range here.
It's been cheaper on the...
I don't know where the Dodge and all them put in bids on that stuff now, I don't know.
I think Dodge does.
Just bid it out.
Okay.
Bid it out, just bring it back.
That gives me direction, and that's really all I was asking for, some direction on which way to go, so we will...
Give some direction.
I appreciate that.
David, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item ten, discuss Yona Preserve project. Mr. Melton?
Mr. Chairman, I had sent some information out to the board on the Yona Preserve project, and just looking for some guidance and direction on where you wanna go on that project.
I've got some questions on, on option three. I've been looking at this pretty hard for the last few days, and John has certainly taken care of, making sure that we're gonna have enough money. The consensus that I see on the map that I'm looking at is to come off of, option three was to come off Asbestos Road, that currently the haul, and so, come off Asbestos Road and go out mauling road, that would get to somebody's property there, and are we willing, are they willing to give up an easement on that from the waterline?
We haven't got that part with them to confirm that. I did, I did talk to them briefly, but...
Well, I was sort of, I'm sort of confused about some of John's footage here. If you go to, to the option three, it's thirty-nine hundred fifty foot of six-inch mine and level hundred fifty foot of twelve-inch mine. Now, I measured that nine ways to Sunday, and I can't come up with that kind of footage.
More of this?
Less, I can't, I mean, unless he's...
Own option three?
Own, own option three, yeah, own option three. Oh, he's got six-inch mines at three thousand nine hundred fifty lineal feet, and he's got twelve-inch mines at eleven hundred and fifty feet. And I've scaled that, and just from Asbestos Road over to the, over to the ball field, it's gonna push it just to be twenty-five hundred feet total. So was he planning going following the ball field, or?
I can't, not, as far as I know, no. I didn't verify his numbers.
Well, the map, the map scales out about five hundred feet from Asbestos Road out to the piece of property where they were thinking about cutting across, and that looks like about seventeen hundred and thirty feet. If you scale it, that's over to the ball field, that's over to, I don't know. I just, I don't know, I just, I just can't.
I can, I can check with him and find, verify these numbers.
No, I'd like to know how many string crossings there are. I know there's one on Asbestos, on Malden Road, I know there's one string crossing. He's got...
I think there's a second one.
He's got crossing the road there on Asbestos Road where the waterline is on Malden side of the road, so there won't have to be no...
Yeah, and so you're right. There won't be a crossing there.
There won't be a crossing on the waterline, it's on Malden side of the road. And then there's a little creek right there when you come off Asbestos Road, but what's the guy's name you spoke of there?
It was Mr. Donald, probably.
Yeah, and there is a sewer line across Second County Road, 'cause I installed it there twenty, twenty-five years ago. Oh, and then I measured the red, and I, I seen...
The Rousey Gay Road.
Yeah. Well... Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, I'm just concerned that, I don't know why, I, I don't think we need a twelve inch water line there, I see no reason to.
I'm asking, why would you go, I mean, I understand, couldn't you not put an eight in?
Well, it's a, it's a twelve, it's a twelve on Asbestos Road, I see no reason.
We did discuss that.
Yeah, I see no reason.
He, he made that a, or he put that down as a twelve inch because he thought that, that the water authority wanted to continue down Malden Road, they would probably.
No, I would never do this with a length, I probably wouldn't do anything bigger than a eight.
Well, I can let him know that.
I just want to hear, redo that at an eight inch?
Now, I'll have him verify, I'll have him verify the distances.
Yeah, verify.
'Cause I didn't, I didn't scale this off, I just went with his number.
But if you, if, let me ask you, since you're the water guy, how do you feel if we were to do that? Because Mike states the direction, I know.
I, I like.
The whole project, 'cause this is all the actual ball field.
He's got this thing down at three hundred thousand.
They need to know where to go.
And.
I know it's hundred thousand miles.
But a mile of pipe here.
Yeah.
We're talking about uh, twenty-five hundred feet of pipe max. I, I need to know how many feet of pipe he's, how many feet of pipe he's wanting to, you need to find out Mike, if that easement is available.
Okay.
I mean, you might, I, I really think this is the best way to go about it, by far the easiest, nearest, best way to go about it. But I think you need to make sure that that easement is available before we go any farther.
Okay.
And I think he may be.
A little.
I think he may be three times more away.
Mike, does that give you enough to be anxious enough?
Sure, well, these are, these are preliminaries, you know, these are preliminaries.
So, Lord, uh, when we get off of Malden Road right there, are we talking about eight inch line or sixteen?
I would say eight inches, I'd just say eight, I'd say eight all the way, then if we ever, if the county ever decides to do anything else over there on Yona Preserve.
You'll have plenty of water.
There'll be plenty of water there to do whatever you want, can't we turn it back on that lake from the lake?
That's great, we're just.
Ain't that right, we need all the water we get out there.
Or you go second that and put it back in. Yeah, charges twice to that.
But I do think option three is by far the, the best way to go, unless the city has a rider.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, what else do you need from us?
That's good.
Once you get this part straightened out, Mike, would you foresee being able to put the entire project out for bid?
I will have to, I, I'll have to ask John some more on that.
Okay, 'cause I know it's something that the, the board is uh, eagerly anticipating that being put out for bid. 'Cause we wanted it to, to be put out for bid in the early fall, um.
Make sure John understands we need to know how many string crossings they own, how much clearing there is in that easement, it's got to be uh, clear to get across.
Okay.
I will do that.
Alright. Okay.
What we're still talking about Yona Preserve right there, I wanted to talk about the other side of Yona Preserve over there at the uh, on the lake side and the project over there and of course, we had uh, we had a sketch that was uh, prepared right here for the building which it needs to do that building and, and did that out, but we have uh, we have a lot of stuff that is gonna be done in-house and with the sole provider and uh, I'd like to see us go ahead and start to move on that, we're gonna, the uh, bike, bike trails and all are gonna be open sometime this fall and we need to go ahead and get our road in there, so that we have a way to get there. Parking lot going, even if the building is not completed at that time, we, we might be in need of a Mac to uh, have some kind of access in there. And I would like to see us uh, I would like to see us uh, go ahead and, and uh, let the road department go ahead and make plans to uh, do the road and parking lot in there and get our sole provider to work on the entrance gate. And we had some uh, uh, positive planned numbers for that, it's all gonna be done mainly in the house type things.
Oh, I hadn't brought this before the water authority board, but Mike's here, he can, he can hear this. When that parking lot is built, you know, we're responsible for the dam though, the water authority, when that parking lot is built, uh, I'd like to see us uh, possibly do a secondary gate, ice and water block to keep people from driving out of the dam, keep people having access to the dam.
I don't think it, I don't think that'd be a problem.
I would, I think we're gonna have to uh, because of the insurance and uh, and we are now having to do a dam inspection out there every uh, three months.
I know that there's gonna be, there, there is a road that goes on around, you probably just need to get off that, get in the parking lot.
Yeah, if we could just cut it off at that parking lot, then we'd probably, you know, I don't have to go by walking, I have a four-wheel drive truck, so trying to cross the spillway and go for the dam, next thing you know, we got some ruts.
And we gotta put, we need to put a fence on the spillway and stuff.
Yes. I like that. But the water authority does pay the liability insurance on the dam, but that insurance, I talked to the agents about it, that insurance is only, and she expressed only if that dam busts, for damage downstream, and that's all it's, that's all it's got. So, it's a breach, is all it is.
You know, the uh, I guess uh, when the uh, trail is finished, and I guess part of the trail goes across that dam around to the other side of the lake over there, is that not right, is that right?
I thought we've had. I think we're standing on the.
I thought we had decided to study.
Phase one and two, now phase three I think crosses over, but we.
Well, I thought phase, is that right?
I'm getting the map right.
I got that big, big old baton on my arm.
Yeah, I, I know that some of those, some have been changed a little bit.
I am looking now at some way to protect that spillway, the uh, the structure, I don't know.
I have been talking to Robert George a few days, say more what you know about that, 'cause I have a horror of, of, I.
Phase two is on the other side of, on the other side.
Does it show, does it show going across the dam, I'm sure it does.
Well, it shows it going around.
Down below.
Down below.
And that would be, that would even.
Yeah, one of, one of them does, this is alternate two and then uh, phase two shows it going across this, bottom of the spill.
Well, the safe down boats are very adamant now, they're, they're gonna be very particular about uh, what kind of activities go on, you know, that would cause erosion or anything that would be detrimental to that dam, uh, so.
So, if you go around the bottom of this, I shouldn't worry.
Shouldn't be any problem with that, shouldn't be any problem with that.
So, then we fence off, we can fence off.
We just have to fence about, and dam off and make it off limits to any pedestrians or anything like that. I really feel, I think it's a safety issue too, because we're going up there, it's all that structure and uh, that's, there's gotta be something going there before the boat can go in.
Terry, what, what do you propose, uh, depending on the bid?
Well, uh, when he gets through this plan, I guess we'll, we'll put this out, out for bid right here and there, and, and on the drawing, he shows uh, he's got the crown head building here and uh, he also has a restroom at Freedom Park right here.
I started saying, I was saying Freedom Park somewhere.
And uh, this, and this, just project at.
Long way to the restroom. Showing it.
But uh. Yeah, the.
Yeah, Freedom Park.
Yeah, we, the Freedom Park bathroom right there, I, I would just like, I was looking, waiting till we could get a contractor that could.
Feel too urgent once.
Yeah. Hopefully that uh, we wouldn't have to.
Are we still good on the location of Freedom Park and the courthouse existing parking lot there?
Uh, I think right now, you, you know where those two trees are in, in the end of the parking lot? Okay, looking, looking from Brook Street back towards the parking lot, the one, the, the tree closes to the courthouse, that tree will probably have to come down and there's a pole there that doesn't have, I don't think it has anything on it and that pole will probably need to come down and it'll be cut into that bank a little bit right there.
But there's room right there for all of this. And you go, are you talking about putting it on uh, courthouse parking lot level or Brook Street?
No, it'd be on the Brook Street level.
Or you're just talking about digging into the bank?
Sidewalks on the Brook Street level right there and the entrance will be for that.
Oh, I want to say.
Okay, and I was just gonna tell you that uh, we, we have a couple of other possible partners on this, so. And the funding wouldn't, uh, hopefully it's not gonna be all county funding, but that would be, come, come out of some of that uh.
Under approach, same way. As long as they don't jerk on us.
Yeah.
I must be blunt, at that, that is, you don't know that.
Yeah, I, I think we're, I don't think it's gonna be.
And what I've heard is not, so.
But I, you want me to go get the check?
We know how to return it. Previous administration, alright, um, let's do this, alright, um, let's move on.
Could we, uh, could we, uh, let the uh, T, you know, there's, we need to put in a water line uh, from the road up to there, up to uh, where the proposed building's gonna be.
You've got a water line on Malden Road.
I thought Malden Reserve.
Malden Road?
Oh, Malden Road?
Yeah. Listen, uh.
I'm not Malden, I meant Albert Reed, you're on Albert Reed, aren't you?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, who Albert Reed?
Yeah, yeah.
Albert, I thought we said Freedom Park.
No.
Y'all quicker than I am.
Well, we're talking about both these projects, the one, the one. But anyway, uh.
The water authority said they'd tie it in for free.
I didn't hear that, I didn't hear that.
Did you hear that? Mister Board Member did that one.
I didn't hear that.
Are you guarding, are you guarding real quick? I'll check your head now.
Uh, but uh, so we, they need to put a, I guess conduit in, Ken, to delay the, uh, lay an electrical line in there, put a water line in and then uh, Dave would be able to uh, get that graded and paved in there and that uh, our sole source provider that we, we're gonna use may always uh, am the other person to uh, get the entrance done.
Well, Todd, what kind of water service you think, Ken, just one inch for restroom or?
Uh, thanks, I would, I think that would be sufficient, right?
Now, that, that's no problem, the water line on that side of the road.
We're talking about uh, using this out of the product development funding right there and, and Ken's portion of it right there, I mean, uh, Dave's, Dave's portion was gonna be about sixty thousand dollars and that was the budget price and I think that Ken had the other number for the gate and all was, it was less than fifteen.
Less than fifteen, yeah. Sixty thousand for water.
For, for uh, paving the road in and parking lot.
And that was gonna be done by.
And that was, that was just a budget.
Alright, one last question. Are we wanting to pave the road before we have the building built? 'Cause if we pave the road and we beat the road up, putting in a new building with heavy equipment, I'm just.
I would suggest a good gravel road to allow the construction to go over there.
That's, that's.
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
That'd be fine, I just wanted to see us move on, I hate to, hate to not have anything open that uh, it looks like if this building takes longer to get the plans ready to bid out, it's gonna be.
John's got that, John is working on it, yeah.
Is that, is that existing building on Bitter Island?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, yeah, they had it reviewed on it and Ken can elaborate, it's a piece of John.
While you're at one of those, yeah, the walls or.
It was gonna cost more to repair them.
Right, the span on the door doors are not even decoded and, you know, it's.
I wasn't planning anything worth it, nor should code, but everybody's.
Is that something that will be included in the, in the contract, in the building of the new building or they demolished the old one or is that something we need to pursue to go ahead and get that out of the way beforehand or?
We can slip it, we can, yeah. Take a track over out there and farm and.
Yeah, I, I will make long part of that.
Mike, what do you need from us to get that moving?
We can, we can go ahead, we can go ahead and demo that building.
Alright.
Uh, it, and we can start, we can start grading that road, we're gonna need, the board's gonna need to make a decision, there's two options on this parking lot uh, that I sent to you, I've got the plans here, you're gonna kinda need to decide which option you wanna go.
Do we have a copy of those plans?
Yeah.
And this package that we're doing.
Which?
The one comes straight in, the one that curves around to the right, I think the one that curves to the right is probably the under option.
This one?
Because you're.
Not cutting into that hill. Yeah.
And that leaves that sycamore tree alone.
Yeah, we'll both have to leave the sycamore tree alone. One's curved around.
Let's say that sycamore tree, the old man, let's say it's sycamore tree.
Which one, which one's the cheaper of the two, this one, 'cause it doesn't cut the mine?
Probably that would be the cheapest one, I'm just looking at it on paper.
And uh, and it doesn't go as deep into the property.
That'll provide how many parkers by?
Uh, they've got about four over fifty, four buses or whatever.
Fifty?
I think, I think it was fifty.
Well, it's about, the rest of them's gonna be built back, kinda where the existing building is at, is that, is that the intent?
Yes, you see that, you see it on there?
Is there any kind of sewer work there, a lot of that exists?
Sewer, I don't think that's the one there, I think, did, did we decide that the sewer, sewer there, that the uh. I suspect it tank wasn't, I think it's not, yeah, I, I don't think it's probably a five hundred gallon tank that's there.
It's got campers, lots and larger, different orders or something. Okay. What do you need from us?
This direction to the, the other department move forward?
Go with that.
Yeah. I don't, and I just, I just, I like that if we don't get started on this, we're not gonna be anywhere close.
It'll be this time next year, so. Alright.
So, we want, the, the road department's gonna move forward with the road and the parking and that's gonna come out of chosen product development funds?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything on the gate, 'cause if we're gonna pay, it's gonna be like fifteen thousand, I need to have it reflected in the minutes that that's being awarded to whoever.
I would say the county for extra site and then get bids on that side, that's what I would say.
But the gate itself?
The gate itself, I think that we could use this, that sole source that we had somebody that we.
I just have to reflect that and then.
Okay.
The mountain.
We need to have that in a package before we develop another project.
Okay.
Sure, I haven't seen.
I don't have that number with me here, I thought.
It exists, I've seen it, I just wasn't prepared to bring it here, so. We're gonna be having some meetings in the next couple of weeks, is what else we can.
The road's not a big deal, is it Dave, it's, it's not a real big deal, the road's not, you're not gonna have to do a lot of massive changing on the dirt, I mean, it's gonna pretty much stay on the same footprint.
Yeah, we're gonna stay on the same footprint.
It's wider than a little bit.
Wider than good, tree trees.
I mean, there's not any cutting, field or a lot of grading to do there.
Little bit on that, on that right side, Bill, but it should be, it's probably.
Various functions.
Special Shannon gets that information, puts that back in the next package, and we'll vote on that.
Gate and.
The gate, yeah.
And the building's gonna be bid out.
When John Stover gets the package, and what we do this, Mike, when John gets the package together, guys, are you fine to go ahead and bid it out?
Yeah, go ahead and bid it out.
If we don't, we're gonna be, we'll have to another month.
Yeah. Go ahead, just go ahead and bid it out, 'cause this is gonna be substantial like this and there's not too much you can do about it.
Is there electricity on that property, was there an existing power line there? I think it is underground service going in or overhead coming?
To the building, there, there's a pole where you, where you go past the building and back towards the dam, the, the.
So, it comes in overhead from the D, or come from the D?
Comes, comes overhead from the DOT up to a pole and then underground, over to the building, yeah.
Alright. Everybody good? Alright, we're gonna move on now, um, item eleven, Miss Vicki's gonna do or present our. Item eleven, Ms. Vicki's gonna do our, present our monthly financial status report. And just keep in mind that we are still closing out the books for June thirtieth. So this is just preliminary for July, July's numbers. So Ms. Vicki, I'll let you run through it.
And we will continue to be, not making any expenses into our figures at the time. The revenues we're collecting that go back to the last year will be done manually by auditors. So, but these figures are all preliminary for the month of June. And that's including the expenditures, some revenues that have come in up until July twenty first. So on record right now, our revenues for June are nine hundred twenty seven thousand, three hundred fifty two dollars. And the expenditures for the month were one million, seven sixty eight, oh fifty three. You can see with the year-to-date totals that they're pretty neck, neck to neck. The revenues totaled fifteen million, four seventy one, seven fifty eight. And expenditures are fifteen thousand, five forty eight, three thirty eight. Of this revenue that we've received so far, the portion of the alcohol-related taxes is part of that. The total amount received for the full year now totals a hundred and twenty thousand, seven nineteen. I'm sorry, can you get that total correctly there? Uh, goofed up on that one, but it does show that the total amount that we have exceeded what we had projected. If memory serves me correctly, we have projected a hundred and fourteen thousand. And we have collected a hundred and twenty thousand. So we're slightly over all the revenues for alcohol taxes. The tabbit tax, the month of June, we received fifty, eighty five thousand, three forty nine, bringing the year-to-date total to eight oh seven, nine twenty two, which exceeded what we budgeted of seven hundred fifty thousand. We're eight percent over. Also, again, keep in mind, these figures are gonna be adjusted by auditors for previous year end and anything coming in next month also. The next slide is with the comparison of the motor vehicle tax and the tabbit money. The motor vehicle tax, we received, we are up to date for the year to two hundred thirty seven thousand, three oh nine, and the tabbit eight oh seven, nine twenty two. As you can see with the scale, that the motor vehicle tax is slowly inching down as we go each year. The next slide is a recap comparison with the loss, county's portion of SLOSS, and the tabbit comparison to this year to last year. Our year-to-date total for the loss that we have received totals two million, four hundred seventeen thousand, seven thirteen. The June total itself is two hundred twelve thousand, seven oh three. So it's second highest or third highest there what we've received during the year. The county's portion for the SLOSS this, for the month of June was two hundred sixty three thousand, two fifty six. That brought the county portion for the full year to two million, nine hundred eighty nine thousand, one seventy two. And again, the inflation on the tabbit, we collected eight hundred and seven thousand, nine twenty two for the month, for the full year. The local, the lost, local option sales tax amount, we budgeted two million, one hundred ninety eight thousand, six twenty two. For the full year, we received two million, four seventeen, seven thirteen, ten percent higher than what we had budgeted. On Hotel Motel, we, for the full year, we collected eight hundred twenty four thousand, seventy three dollars. We had budgeted six hundred seventy six thousand, six seventy five. So we've exceeded that by twenty two thousand. What you do have to keep in mind with the entries that the auditors will be making in the first month showing in our graphs for July, also contain entries that will be dropping off. So some drop off, replacing some with the money that's still coming in. The loss we received, the loss amount, June was our thirty first month of the seventy two period, seventy two month period. In June, ACH received was three hundred fifty four thousand, five hundred six dollars. Each of the cities received forty five thousand, six hundred twenty five dollars. The county's portion for the month of June was two hundred sixty three thousand, two fifty six. Our totals to date for the SLOSS for the thirty one months was nine million, seven hundred twenty seven thousand, two thirteen. Each of the cities received one million, two hundred fifty one thousand, eight hundred ninety two dollars. And the county retained the seven million, seven million, two hundred twenty three thousand, four twenty five. Here is the recap for the thirty one months. And as Kevin had mentioned earlier, our highest month was August of last month. So that is indicated, yeah. June, we received is three fifty four, five oh six. Our July that we just received totaled three hundred, totaled three hundred seventy seven thousand. And that'll be on the next report. Looks like August is really our highest month. The June SLOSS receiving again was three fifty four, five oh six. The county retained an admin fee of three thousand, five hundred forty five dollars. Each of the cities received forty five thousand, six hundred twenty five dollars. We earmarked a hundred thousand dollars, which we do each month to pay the debt service funds. And the project fund account for projects, we had a hundred fifty nine thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars that went into that account for the month. On this slide two, so these percentages are high. Keep it in mind, it's all preliminary. It does reflect in the last column that solid waste has spent five percent more than budgeted. They of course have revenues coming, still coming in. Nine one one is at ninety nine percent of their budget. Drug task force, a hundred and fifteen percent of their budget. But they're still waiting on revenues to come in. That will filter those of that out. And the notice circuit is at ninety one thousand, or excuse me, ninety one percent of their budget. So it's all preliminary. We will still be accepting invoices from last year on into August. And then the auditors will be here in September working on the budget or the audits, excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we've got some scouts with us in the room. Guys, I hope this hasn't been too confusing. But I'm sure with you, the way county government operates, the county receives a lot of its funding in the fall time, October, November, December, thereabouts, because that's when the county collects most of our property tax. So we're revenue heavy. We get a lot of our, our money in the fall. And then we, we, our expenses are spread throughout the year. So that's free. I just thought I'd share that with you because a lot of this stuff, you're like, this makes no sense. So I'm just hopefully have, yeah, a little bit. Okay. Moving our agenda, Mr. Mellon, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I don't have any in particular, Mr. Chairman, but I'd be glad to answer any questions before I move on.
Item thirteen, public participation. This is where we give citizens an opportunity to ask any questions. If we don't have answers, we'll do our best to get you answers during the week or express any thoughts, opinions that you'd like to express to the, to the board. So if you have anything, raise your hand and get to you as quickly as I can. Just to get your name and address for our record. And if you got anything, let me know. Chair?
I just wanna make a comment. I know I said it to you a while ago, that the drug task force took a big bite out of the drug trade in northeast Georgia over the weekend. That was about a six to eight month investigation and it was very profitable. It didn't show any stats in white county, but trust me, these dealers here were just a shot, hop, skip and jump over to Haversham and Stevens County and that's where they were going to get most of it. Anyway, long story short, they had, they done a great job, took a lot of drugs, guns and some money off the street. So hopefully that sent another message to them. That's all we can do is keep, keep taking a bite out of them.
If you're outside and really give this amount of money, I think we know for a good personal.
We got two agencies sitting right here that we gave a hard time.
I just don't believe we can hate you at this time.
All right. Remember those seven bars?
They don't sign under contract sign.
Sorry, moving on. Okay, anyone else? Yes, Cindy?
Just a reminder, the chamber's annual meeting is August the twenty third. We held at Baby Land General Hospital. We're really excited to be hosting. Our keynote speaker is Bert Brantley, who is the Commissioner for Economic Development in the state of Georgia. He'll be coming in the night prior to staying at Valhalla. We're trying to organize a dinner right now and then a windshield tour prior to the luncheon. Also, we're in the process of our Quality of Life magazine. This will be the official magazine that we use for business recruitment, relocation, and we'll also put those in all the hotel rooms, cabins and so forth. So they'll, they'll begin working on the, that, that magazine this month. And then also, we're starting a new program, a business retention expansion program. Some of you may be familiar, DCA did a BREP survey of businesses and industries. We're working through local chambers. They're not initiating that program this, this time around, but the chamber is. And we have invited DCA to, to come and help us in, in putting that together. So we'll be putting some teams together with our economic development committee and calling on our local businesses and industries. And met with the chairman of that committee this morning and pulled out the old BREP survey. Even DCA couldn't find one, but it was a miracle. It appeared for the walls of the chamber, a, a copy of that survey. So we'll be looking at revising that and reviewing it. There were questions that was asked of local businesses about like public safety, fire, fire service and, and different things. And we'll certainly invite Mike to, to come to that meeting and help us put that, put that together. But basically, we want to, to assess the needs of our, our existing industry. It's a lot easier to, to help those be successful and grow than, than recruiting new ones. But, but you start with what you got and, and go from there. So we're looking forward to, to making calls on those local businesses and missions.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else? All right. Coming announcements and the board does have a quick executive session that we'll be entering into in a few minutes. This Thursday morning at eight AM as well as six PM, we'll be conducting a public hearing regarding the millage rate. That's again, this Thursday morning at eight AM here in this location, right where we are. And again, at six o'clock that evening. And then Monday, we will not be having a meeting Monday a week from today. This was this meeting that was combined together. We will be having on Monday, August the fourteenth, a call meeting, but also a public hearing on the millage as well as possible adoption of that millage at the August fourteenth meeting. The meeting, the public hearing's at four thirty, call meeting starts at four forty five. So other than that, that's all I've got. Mr. Mellon, Shandale, missed anything? All right. Item fifteen, considering entering executive session, board discussed personnel, they have a motion. Mr. Wright first.
Sir.
Mr. Nick second. All in favor? Say aye. I suppose they no. All right. Folks, thank you. We're officially in the executive session. Everyone have a great week this week and enjoy this slow committee. It's been a lot nicer than the last couple of years.